Okay, well, thank you all for coming to this press conference today. You will have noticed several developments during the last week or so. First off, a bill set out to reform both municipalities was tabled in the House, turning them into quangos operated by a council appointed by and exclusively reporting to a single government minister, completely revoking the electoral process. This would be the same minister who, under already existing legislation, can direct, accept, or refuse resolutions, take over stewardship, control the finances of the corporations, and appoint a public official to sit in his stead at any council or committee meeting. This gentleman's powers are also the same powers which were derided by this government when they were in opposition as being anti-democratic, complete control by the government, and a land grab. This bill, being the last in a series of acts amending the municipalities Act, started in 2010 with what was then described as the rolling up of the municipalities into the various government departments. After the loud public outcry at that time of asset grabbing, a cabinet paper recommending the quango route and for the process of moving, or more realistically, stripping the assets of the corporations to be done over a three-year period. This 2019 bill did not pass through the Senate. However, it can be reintroduced through Parliament in a year's time. In the meantime, municipal elections have been called. The Parliamentary Register has dropped an election writ, and for the election to be held on May the 9th. In one week's time, the opportunity to register will close. A list of registered voters will be compiled. You may contest it if you wish, and then a final list is published with a fortnight left between the nomination day and the final election day. It is important, in the next week, for anyone who has recently moved into the city, has turned 18 again recently, to ensure their registration is up to date. It is equally important for Bermuda businesses, or those who lease property to businesses, to register or ensure their details are up to date. I must admit to being a little disheartened by the public silence of Bermuda businesses on this matter. I received numerous compliments on the corporation's stance when walking the streets of the town from so many different Bermidians, and yet businesses most impacted by these changes are quiet, their trade associations silent. So, resident or ratepayer, do not come up to me at some future date and tell me how inconvenient the process, or how inconsiderate of your time the process was. Given what this team has done over the last four years, rescuing and protecting the ratepayer from extortionate guarantee payments, recovering lost revenue, revitalizing the city, and getting it back on its financial feet, the least you could do is to participate in this election. Many will consider this a referendum on local government. For those of you who believe no taxation without representation, well, it is equally true that no representation without registration, so please register. It was the minister's statement soliciting public consultation in order to gain community guidance, and the cynical way in which that process was discarded for an already written bill, that the council decided as one to fight it in the courts. A loss in the Senate for this bill simply means that the can gets kicked down the road for another year. We saw how little effort was employed to seek and incorporate the true consultation during the year's delayed election. It would be naive to expect anything different over the following year. By entering into the court action, we included the amending Acts of 2010, 13, 15, 18, and 19, but only, and this is a key phrase in our originating summons, "in that and so far as." We believe the various sections of these Acts contravene Sections 1 and 13 of the Bermuda Constitution. These impact the fundamental rights and freedoms of individuals, and protection from deprivation of property. It was disappointing in the least to hear the government's leader in the upper house, the country's leading legal representative, whilst in the Senate debating this bill, discussing a case before the courts, and misrepresenting it or ignoring a basic legal phrase in such a manner as to seek to influence the vote of fellow senators. Nothing in our actions seeks to alter, deprive, or extinguish any current voter rights. It is our aim actually to reestablish the vote for residential ratepayers who may not live within the city. There are many black landlords of residential properties throughout the city who have been disenfranchised. We believe their rights should be restored. This is especially important for those having property in North Hamilton, an area government has designated for affordable housing and for what we in Bermuda would call high-rise buildings. This franchise mix between ratepayer and resident is not unique to Bermuda. A Google search will quickly show many municipalities throughout the Commonwealth with similar structures. Australia and New Zealand abound with such structures. The City of London has a franchise where businesses with larger employee bases have differing number of votes. Our legislation limits parent companies to just one vote, and that is fine by us. Not quite two years ago, we had an approach from the Commonwealth Local Government Forum on behalf of the island of New Providence and the capital of Nassau in the Bahamas. This was an advisory committee approach supported by the Bahamian government to restore local government on that island. They saw the impact of losing the local government tier. Hamilton was identified as a prime example of how to do it right. We made our minister aware of the pending visit and offered to do introductions. The trip was unexpectedly canceled. It is equally disappointing to hear of other mistruths. The corporation is run by an oligarchy, for example. Well, have a look around the table. I think if you look at the current members, you will think more of a polygarchy rather than an oligarchy. A polygarchy would be a much more appropriate title. At this point in time, I'm going to ask some of the members for their own comments. Thank you. This is Consulor Harvey.
Good afternoon. My name is John Harvey. I'm chairman of the Infrastructure Committee for the Corporation of Hamilton. Some of the things that we are responsible for are all the buildings that the corporation owns in the city, the streets, parks, waterfront, and some other few things, all of which, I must say, that I think we're very proud of the staff who we believe are doing an excellent job in maintaining these vital assets. The two things I want to address today, because I believe that it's important for the city and the government to be in constant communication and collaboration. One is the sewage. We heard at the Heritage Hall when there was a public meeting, some suggestion that there was an absolute need for the government to control the sewage situation in Bermuda, and that might have some merit, but what we need to know is that, and what we were informed at that meeting, was, as we speak, there's about 220,000 gallons of water being treated at the West End dark yard, and about $20,000, I think, at the South Side in St. George's. This city daily has to deal with 600,000 gallons of untreated water, and it would seem to me that it would behoove the government and ourselves to get together if there is to be a master plan for Bermuda and the city going forward. We know that the government has talked about a plan, but quite frankly, we're not familiar with all the details. What we do know is that we have ongoing day-to-day challenges with our treatment, and so, again, it's important that everybody gets on board to do that. After all, we do have to support steps like the Hamilton Princess, the Barclay Institute, the Cedar Bridge, I think about 80% of all the residents and prospect, let alone all the buildings in the city, and I think also the hospital is still on our line. And so, it's important. This is not a challenge that's exclusively for the city, but I think, again, it's all for Bermuda to, as I say, work together. The other initiative I want to emphasize is that there's been some comment about us not willing to participate or involve ourselves in the waterfront, the development of the waterfront. Well, I've been here now for, I think, eight years, not continues, we did lose the last time, but prior to that, and indeed now, that conversation has never left the agenda. In fact, everybody who drives along Front Street today, you will see the Bermuda Tourism Authority's temporary building there. One of the reasons why we decided to agree to that was to get public comment on that, so that they will know that going forward, there could possibly be other types of buildings in that locale and going east or west on Front Street. The waterfront, as I said before, is something that we know that we've met with. I know that myself and the mayor have met with former Premier Cox. We had a huge conference on the issue some years ago, and everyone knows that Sir John Swan, he's had competition on the waterfront, so it's a discussion that I don't want anyone ever to believe that it's been pulled off the table, put in the oven, it's something that people want to do, but needless to say, you've got to have the financial means to make things happen. We believe in private-public partnerships, so I'm just hoping that that matter is now cleared up once and for all and put to bed. So, I'm going now calling my colleague, Consulor George Scott, who has some wonderful words of wisdom.
Good afternoon, members of the press. I'm going to read from Bermuda's Architectural Heritage Series, Hamilton Town and City, by Bermuda National Trust. "The primary reason for the slow-street development was the lack of funds to pay for it. The town had been handicapped since its inception by the fact that in October 1797, it had reimbursed the government $6,268 that the commissioners had paid since 1790 in order to develop the town. This included the initial purchase of the lands for the town, as well as building the customs house warehouse and other cost. In addition, interest was included. The corporation had financed this by issuing certificates or debentures on which it paid interest. Revenues available to the town were mainly derived from two sources: the sale of town lots and income from wharfage. The primary source of income was wharfage going forward during that period of time." And now, I'm going to segue into the Constitution of Bermuda, protection from deprivation of property. Section 13 of the Bermuda Constitution, "No property of any description shall be compulsory taken possession of, and no interest in or right over property of any description shall be compulsory acquired, except where the following conditions are satisfied," that is to say, "A) the taking of possession or acquisition is necessary or expedient in the interest of defense, public safety, public order, public morality, public health, town, and country planning, or the development or utilization of any property in such manner as to promote the public benefit or the economic well-being of the community; and, there is a reasonable justification for the causing of any hardship that may result to any person having an interest in or right over the property; and, provision is made by a law applicable of that taking of possession or acquisition. One, for the prompt payment of adequate compensation; and, two, securing to any person having an interest in or right over the property, a right of access to the Supreme Court, whether direct or an appeal from any other authority, for the determination of his interest or right, the legality of the taking of possession or acquisition of the property, interest or right, and the amount of any compensation to which he is entitled, and for the purpose of obtaining prompt payment of that compensation; and, D, given to any party to proceedings in the Supreme Court relating to such a claim, the same rights of appeal as are accorded generally to the parties to civil proceedings in that court, sitting as a court of original jurisdiction. Two, nothing contained in any law shall be held to be inconsistent with or in contravention of subsection 1 of this section. A) to the extent that the law in question makes provision for the taking of possession or acquisition of any property, interest, or right. One, in satisfaction of any tax rate or due; two, by way of a penalty for breach of any law or forfeiture in consequence of a breach of any law. Three, as an incident of a lease, tenancy, mortgage, charge, bill of sale, pledge, or contract. Four, by way of taking of a sample for the purposes of any law. Five, where the property consists of an animal upon its being found trespassing or straying. Six, in the execution of judgments or orders of a court. Seven, by reason of its being in a dilapidated or dangerous state, or injurious to the health of human beings, animals, or plants. Eight, in consequence of any law with respect to prescription or the limitation of actions, or for so long only as may be necessary for the purposes of any examination, investigation, trial, or inquiry, or in the case of land, for the purposes of the carrying out thereon of work or reclamation, drainage, soil conservation, or the conservation of other natural resources on work relating to the agricultural development or improvement, being work relating to such development or improvement that the owner or occupier of the land has been required and has without reasonable and lawful excuse refused or failed to carry out, except so far as that provision, or as the case may be, the thing done under the authority thereof is sure not to be reasonably justifiable in a democratic society. B) to the extent that the law in question makes provision for the taking, possession, or acquisition of any of the following property, including an interest or in or right over property, that is to say, enemy property, property of a deceased person, a person of unsound mind, or a person who has not attained the age of 21 years, for the purpose of its administration for the benefit of the persons entitled to the beneficial interest therein. Property of a person adjudged bankrupt or a body corporate in liquidation for the purpose of its administration for the benefit of the creditors of the bankrupt or body corporate, and a subject thereto for the benefit of other persons entitled to the beneficial interests in the property. Or, property subject to a trust for the purpose of vesting the property in persons appointed as trustees under the instrument creating the trust, or by order of a court for the purpose of giving effect to the trust. Three, nothing contained in or done under the authority of any law shall be held to be inconsistent with or in contravention of subsection 1 of this section to the extent that the law in question makes provision for the compulsory taking of possession in the public interest of any property, or the compulsory acquisition of the public interest of any interest in or right over property where that property, interest, or right is held by a body corporate established by law for public purposes in which no monies have been invested other than monies provided from public funds." Thank you.
Thank you, Consulor Scott. I'm going to lighten this up a bit. There's a solid reason why I didn't study law. And I think we heard that just a minute ago. My name's Henry Ming. I'm a Consul for the corporation. Bit about myself, I grew up in North Hamilton. I spent the first 20 years of my life in North Hamilton, ran all the back streets, knew all of the alleyways, knew where to run when being chased, and always found my way home. My mother, now deceased, lived in Hamilton, North Hamilton, for 92 years of her life. Just to touch on the issue of voting, for example, should my mother be alive today, and should, heaven forbid, but if the case arose that we would have to take care of my mother, my wife and I live in Warwick, my mother would have to have moved to Warwick, therefore losing the right to vote. The way the voting stands today is simply that residents have a vote, property owners who rent residential work do not have a vote. That's just as bad as another situation that did transpire when they did change the vote, whereas an individual who could probably stay overnight at a shelter in North Hamilton for a week or night or two would have the right to vote without even knowing or understanding anything about Hamilton or paying taxes. That's just as bad as what we have today. And I'm all for the idea of change. I think, though, change has to be fair, and it has to work for all, and it has to work not just for Hamilton, but for all of Bermuda. In North Hamilton, there have been comments from time to time about it being neglected, and there is some degree of truth to that in the past, but I can say that that's not the case today. My office is on Ewing Street, and I think all can see, just by traveling in North Hamilton, that's one of the best streets in Bermuda today. Had nothing to do with me as being a Consul, that was prior to my being on the corporation itself. There's also the issue of traffic, and we are constantly upgrading what's called the scoot system. This is an electrical system which is embedded in the streets, which can be further enhanced by camera systems, but this allows traffic to flow freely from one intersection to another. That's what's called smart, a part of what's called a smart city. As far as trash collection is concerned, you couldn't beat the trash collection, not just in North Hamilton, but in all of Hamilton. There was a time when there was an emergency where the corporation did assist government in lending our trucks to pick up garbage throughout the entire island. We have still, we still have the best garbage collection system. You've heard about the sewage systems? Yes, it's only a first stage of a total sewage system. What we do today is simply pick up, or just take out the solids. The second phase, which is planned but being held because we yet to have approval for that, is to further distill the water or to purify the water, not to a stage where it's going to be at a point where you can drink the water, but it can be freely discharged into Bermuda's waters. Back in 1981, there was a project, there was a book published by Stuart Haverton-Wolfgang Stirrer that talked about Bermuda's delicate balance. Actually, that was the name and title of the book, and in one of the pages, it pointed out that there was a total of 17 sewage outlet falls around Bermuda, 17. That has improved, naturally, kudos to government for that, and one or two quangos as well. But the point is that you cannot, Bermuda cannot, change the entire sewage system and nationalize it overnight. It won't work. It cannot work. It has to be paid for, and whether we're going for, whether Bermuda goes for a system which is, which will completely purify the water, or simply cleanse the water, it's still going to take many, many years and many, many dollars to finance. One of the areas that I would personally like to speak about is simply the issue, or it is the issue, of the waterfront. We heard quite just a minute ago about what has taken place in the past. There's been an average of about six or seven major proposals for the waterfront, documentation done by governments and private enterprises as well. I believe, I strongly believe, and council supports this, that the only way forward in any form of development, register sewage system, the waterfront, is by a consortium of the individuals themselves, that is, the corporation, government, and a private developer. You first want to define just what you are trying to do, you do not do that overnight. You then talk about how this will be implemented, you then select a developer, I'm sorry, a contractor, and frankly, this type of proposal will take a while to be done. We cannot do that overnight. It's not that we haven't been interested, we recognize realities of how things can be done. We also recognize, though, that even if it's a major scheme, which will involve many, many dollars, millions and millions of dollars, this cannot be and will not be done at one time. It can be and should be phased. It's one of the best ways of achieving the best for all of Bermuda. The waterfront itself needs one to generate revenue, that's obvious. It cannot operate simply as a park. The waterfront needs to provide places for the people in general, both the cities, our persons in the city, as well as the general public. It needs to have places for social interaction, and many of the schemes we have seen have that. There also needs to be, as I said, a phased development which will allow for the best type of solution which gives Bermuda one of the jewels of the world. Already, Hamilton has been defined as a jewel, but I think we need to be careful how we develop it, not to destroy the jewel, but to enhance that, and it can be done. And as I said before, it can and should be done with the help of government working with us, we, the corporation, working with government, and a developer, and then taking it from there. The final thing I want to speak on, just briefly, is the voting system. As you heard just a minute ago, the voting system itself has to be changed. None of us here believe that the way it stands right now will work, nor has it worked in the past. It's worked for a handful, hence the old term, the oligarchy. But if you look around today, especially here in the City Hall, we don't look like that. None of us look like that, none of us work that way. And I think the bottom line is that if it's truly recognized about who we are, we are not the corporation of 40 years ago, 50 years ago. We are a younger group, a smarter group in my mind, I'm going to catch that, I'm sure that's not going to work well, a smarter group, but a group that works for all of Bermuda, and in particular, a group that works for the corporation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, media. Thank you for coming. My name is Larry Scott. I am the Chairman of the Staff Legislation and Governance Committee. Let me just begin this way. There's a lot of misinformation out there about who we are as a corporation. We've been referred to variously as the oligarchs. I must tell you, I didn't get that memo. It didn't come by my desk at all. In fact, we don't represent the oligarchs in the same way as is being suggested, as though an oligarch comes and says, "Well, Scott, when you're making your decisions at the Corporation of Hamilton, make sure you take my interest into heart. Make sure that my business succeeds. You've seen my balance sheet." You just heard the mayor say, "God, they don't even register. We're going to have a trouble. We're going to have trouble getting a mug there." We don't, what we do do is this, we get rid of all of your waste, your waste that Consulor Harvey spoke of and that Consulor Ming spoke of. We get rid of your trash. We paint the lines on your street. We make sure that we have parking available for you. No one is ever satisfied with that, but we try to make it as accessible as possible. We lease buildings, every pink building that you see in the city that looks like the old customs house, we own that, we rent it out, and we get income for it so that we can run the city. But we're not sitting around making decisions for business people. We're providing a service to the people who live and work in this city. Let me just mention some of the misinformation that I've heard in another place. My brother in particular reminded the audience two Friday nights ago, "The Corporation of Hamilton has taken the Queen's bottom, and it has control over the waters all the way out to White's Island, up through the Channel, all the way out into the Channel, into..." What's the sound out there? Great sound. Well, if you look at our act, there was a time when we had that kind of control, and if you had a bathroom and you parked it in Two Rock Passage, we could tell you, move the bloody bathroom. You can't park it there, it's a cruise liner coming down. How are we going to do commerce? All right, that's what we could do in years gone by. Guess who does it now? The Department of Marine and Ports, government. But you were left with the impression that we oligarchs control things. It doesn't go like that. It's misinformation. Let me be clear. We are trustees of this city on behalf of the ratepayers, both business and residents. We have a responsibility to look after their affairs and their property which has been deeded to them. I say this to the government, and that's why Consulor George Scott, my namesake, read out the Constitution to you. If you wish to take the land from us, bring your checkbook. We are prepared to take off our little pins and go and play golf, quite frankly, but if you bring an idea that you want to take possession of the land that belongs to the ratepayers of this city, you must bring your checkbook. It's like me coming up your house and saying, "I want to take your land." Well, there's a part of the Constitution and a part of legislation- Well, there's a part of the Constitution and a part of legislation which says, "If government wishes to and they can, they must compensate you with a reasonable price for your land." Otherwise than that, we do a, well, I don't want to pat ourselves on the back, I've been here for about six years, a fairly sterling job. Let me give you one more example before I sit down. Eighteen million dollars, you all heard about that one. My Staff Legislation Committee has tried over with government to get them to pass legislation to affect us, to help us, whether it be just for running ordinances in the city, and I don't want to deal with ordinance. But in the last administration, they decided that they were going to amend the legislation to give a guarantee or give power to the corporation to enter into guarantees with other persons. And they amended the legislation. You know the story about it now, eighteen million dollars went missing and we went to the Privy Council of England to fight that case and we won. And here was the principle on which we won. The court ruled based on our arguments that the amendment to the Municipalities Act, which gave us the power to in fact issue guarantees, was so badly drafted that it didn't give the guarantee power. Thank you very much, government, for having passed legislation which saved us eighteen million dollars. But they will tell you, they can do it better. We say to the public who we represent, give us a chance to continue on doing a sterling job for you. We have an excellent team of our councillors and our executives. By, as a matter of fact, the vast majority of the executive look like me too. They're not oligarchs. Ordinary working class Bermudians who come and do a pretty fair job on a daily basis. We are not beyond criticism, but we do, quite frankly, in my view, and I'm prepared to say it, a better job than government. This is a place where most people want to come and work and do. And we pay on the whole better than government and have better terms and conditions of work than government. We do so because we've developed relationships. You have to make a decision, members of the public, about whether or not this organization, as is governed, as is managed, is doing a fair job. You can see for yourselves what's been done and then make the comparison, whether or not the way we manage our affairs in a financially responsible way, we don't have debt and debt that we have, we can manage and we can pay our bills. Thank you.
As you can tell, I've already taken my pin off. Whether I'll go out and play golf, that's another matter. So all this leads to what? Obviously, we have two levels of government with trust issues. It's clear that in two hundred and twenty-five years, the corporation has significantly developed the city of Hamilton. Could it do a better job in addressing the needs of its citizens, businesses and improving the positive impact on Bermuda's economy? Well, the answer would have to be yes. We also have to have recognized that many of our potential efforts are tied up in government bureaucracy seeking approval. Today, we are talking about small items, parking legislation, which has been back and forth now for almost ten years, garbage legislation for over six, property exchanges which impact pedestrian health and safety, outstanding now for about three years. Further outstanding items are the rent to, which should be, should have been collected from the fire station for the last twelve years and the bus depot now for almost three years. And we haven't even got to the big picture yet, you know, how to develop the waterfront, how to create, I would prefer rather than a smart city because we're only a quarter of a square mile big, I mean, that's kind of small. Why don't we actually start thinking outside of, outside of the square mile and the quarter square mile and develop a smart island? I think that would have a much better ring to it. It's quite obvious the corporation can't do anything significant without government's participation. Nothing can happen on the waterfront without the willing participation of the corporation, certainly without government seeking approval. So I would actually like to extend an olive branch to government. I would like to suggest that rather than entering into presenting another bill to Parliament, which flies in the face of what most Bermudians want, or calculating how stewardship can be introduced, we actually engage in a true search for what is best for the island and the two municipalities. Each is deserving of its own new act that I would, and I would hope that question is, has been answered. We need to form a commission or a committee. Now, the nuances between the two are far too much for me to consider today, but one which is empowered by government and the two municipalities to do an examination through public hearings of how the municipalities run, their strengths, their weaknesses, how government can help facilitate their efficient operations, how together they may address a lot of the needs of their constituents, encourage and nourish growth. This commission should be under the chairmanship of a senior, well-respected individual selected from all sides and the members should be decided by the government and the two municipalities. They should look at such items as creating potentially a port authority, which we were discussing earlier, for the development of the waterfronts with government, the municipalities and financiers being the shareholders. They should look at governance, the benefits of ordinance versus legislation, how to improve communication and services between the municipalities and government service, sorry, between municipalities and government and service standards in terms of meaningful response times and completion of tasks. A timeline should be given with the expectation of a report and drafting instructions for new legislation. This could be a process by which we unite together. This could be the process by which we actually mature and realize that we're all here together on a small island in the middle of nowhere and where if we don't work together, we will certainly fail. I hope the premier and his cabinet will take this on. He will be receiving a letter from us in the next day or two on this matter. So thank you all very much and if there are any questions, we'd be quite happy to, and the council will be happy to entertain those. Yeah, we are continuing with that. There was a, we were in court the other day to have a stay on the act, but the Senate beat us to it with their defeating the bill. So that means that it doesn't have to be there for, doesn't have to be re-presented for another year. But government is in the position where it could introduce a, another bill essentially addressing the same matter but cloaked in different verbiage, any time between now and then. So, and we do think that a lot of what came about in the amendments does strike at the, at our constitutional rights and our ability to maintain our, maintain the properties of... People confuse a little bit with the corporation. They think of guys with Rolls Royces and BMWs and all that stuff. I can tell you right now, we are paid on a per meeting basis and that is it. We do not receive any benefits at all of the profitability, but thank God, we're also not fined by any of the, if there were perchance, any losses. But this is all us being trustees for the ratepayers of the city which date back to when that initial property was purchased back in the seventeen nineties.
So just clarify, you don't proceed with the legal...
We are proceeding with it. Yeah. Yeah. We're hoping that it will be heard in June.
You mentioned putting out an olive branch should lead the government to minister. You mentioned both St. George's and Hamilton should get a new bill.
Yeah.
What does that look like to you?
Well, it's just that there are so many different, they are a completely different organization, we are a completely different organization. They handle their meetings differently than we do. Our meetings are public. I'm not quite sure if their meetings are actually public. We print our minutes and all that stuff, so we operate in a different style than they do. A lot of the issues which we address are different. An interesting thing, going back to the whole issue with the fire and the hydrants and all that stuff, the Municipalities Act up until two thousand and seven, one of the, one of the reasons why we could charge ratepayers a tax on their property, et cetera, was for the running of the fire station and firefighting equipment. In two thousand and, we lost, we gave up that, the fire station, the fire brigade in Hamilton back in nineteen eighty-two. And in two thousand and seven was when St. George's gave that up. That is when that clause was taken out of the act for the, so really, it was there for one municipality, was not there for the other. And I'm sure will be clouding the issue a little bit of a responsibility of maintenance of fire hydrants and stuff like that moving forward. It would just have been a lot easier if the two municipalities had been treated separately. I hope I made that clear.
Touching on the fire service.
Yeah.
Can you clarify, is my understanding that there was debt due from both sides that was owed by the government?
There is a debt due to unpaid rent. We have tried on several occasions and I believe we are back holding discussions again or they've just recently reopened in terms of trying to establish what a fair rent would be for that, for that building. So there's those monies which date back to two thousand and eight, I believe. There's also fees which we need to pay government for the tipping of the trash that we collect throughout the city. But it's not quite as simple as that because we also collect all of government's trash without charging them. The ratepayers of the city subsidize government's services within this quarter square mile. So we, it would be nice to have the opportunity for us to be able to sit down and say, "Okay, you do this for me, I do that for you," everything done together rather than just every month or so getting a separate little request from a ministry on a little item which collectively becomes pretty big.
Imagine a lack of participation or appears the interest from the local business community. Who do you attribute that to?
In some respects, I'm going to take it as a compliment because I know with the prior administration, businesses were not silent at all. There was quite a raucous going on. But, and maybe it's because they're very, very challenging times, but businesses have got to realize what the fundamentals are in terms of their ability to do business. We are trying to run this corporation in the most efficient manner possible. I believe very much that the support of the infrastructure that we do be at a minimal cost to the, to the ratepayer, but at the same time, try to maximize our rewards in that in terms of making the city a desirable, a desirable place to do business. But if it's costing you hundreds of thousands of dollars to do business in the city, it's understandable for people to go elsewhere.
You spoke of the need for their involvement. Just explain to them, why they need to be involved and what sort of participation you would like to have.
Well, I would hope that this could be deemed as a referendum for, in support of local government. Local government has its role even in a small island like Bermuda. It deals with issues immediately. It does not have the luxury of being able to pass that on. And I think, I would hope that businesses on the island would understand that and understand the, really, the need of having a, of them being in the middle of a desirable location, that is a vibrant city, that there are things going on here, people want to be here, they want to play a role.
Barring government introducing any new legislation, you have a window of about a year.
Well, actually, the last time I felt that we had a window, I got slammed down on my knuckles and I got booted out of office. So I would say that we have until May to, May the ninth to get our case across and hopefully that the public will understand the importance of having this level taking care of their immediate needs.
I'll then be back to the municipal. Can you speak of any plans that the corporation has for the city in the upcoming year?
Well, there's, well, one that I'm, that we've been, we're coming to the conclusion of and hoping to do the ribbon cutting in the next month is the solar panels at the Works Depot. I want to expand that and actually, I want to see what we can do in terms of utilizing our open spaces, which are also known as car parks, for those to be used as solar collecting areas and to be able to work with government and with the various authorities in terms of being able to do that and getting a reasonable recompense on the, on our investment and of the energy which we will be selling to third parties. We have right now down on Front Street, pumping stations which work twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. So we consume a lot of electricity and whatever we can do to lower those costs will enable us to do other things. We have right now, again, another ribbon cutting opportunity next month will be with the BTA building on the waterfront. You know, Bermuda went along very, very quietly for so many years until I think it was in the beginning of two thousand and nine where the corporation at that time decided to tear down the number one car park, well, the number one shed down there, which was a facility for the cruise ships. Ever since then, people have been saying, "Oh, my God, how could you waste that on car parking and a set of bathrooms?" Well, guess what? The parking and bathrooms were there actually well before just about anything else in that area, but it made people suddenly see from the nice vista and stuff like that of what was available out there. We're hoping with the BTA building, love it or hate it, it shows you what some of the opportunities are out there. If we are going to be developing the waterfront, it's going to be anywhere from a quarter to half a billion dollars worth of development there. Bermudians have got to be darn certain that they know what they're getting into before it starts happening because if you get to that point halfway through and you're getting difficulty with financing and stuff like that, you're stuck. You're on those rails and there's no way off. So we're hoping that will be, become a discussion. We have the Customs House down on the far end, which government, well, the Customs Department moved out of last year and we are having that, we're having engineers go through that to do, see what work needs to be done on that. And that is another area which we would like to be developing, second to that. We don't know what the extent of the work is at this point in time, so who knows? But that is another key part of the waterfront that we'd like to see progress on. There's the Stevedore License, which is coming up for RFP shortly and that will be decided in a two-year period. The current license holder may be reappointed, but it's within the financial instructions that we've been given by government that we need to go through that process. And I fully support them on that. You want to have opportunity for everybody. You can't allow one person to monopolize that process through time immemorial. That opportunity has to be given out on a regular basis. So that is going to be another... So that is going to be another key part of the waterfront jigsaw puzzle.
Is this the first time that they've been...
No, I know that it was awarded some, many, many years ago, but for the last, last, we don't know how many years. It's been for a, for approximately a five-year period and has automatically rolled over. And with the instruction, with the new financial instructions, which were about three years ago, it was, no, sorry, that's, we can renew this one time, but we have to go through the RFP process.